Recording in progress.
All right, good evening. I'm calling to order our Tuesday, July 11 meeting. I will have our city clerks start with our roll call.
Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart. Councilmember Retuja Indapure.
Here.
Councilmember O'Sheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will undertake a motion to approve Councilmember Stewart's absence.
So moved.
Seconded. All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty, I will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. All right, Councilmember O'Farrell, do you mind doing the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely. Got it right here. Well, thank you. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights on this land, specifically the Snoqami Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
All right, next up, we will make a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, okay, so public comment we have first. We'll start in the room. And I do not have the list, but... I assume Paul is on there. Yeah, there you go. Oh, Paul, you're first. You're up.
There we go. Hello, City Council. Paul Stickney-Samamish here. I was actually hoping to hear Pam Stewart coming down from the sky like in the old days Nancy Whitten when she was out of town. It was a big booming voice. It was kind of exciting. But anyway, I'm here today to chat a little bit about the notch. And what I'm going to talk about is a little bit counterintuitive and not maybe straightforward, but I think it's an interesting could, not a should. And I'll spit it out to start with. I think all the planning on the notch is good, but I'm wondering if it should be held and reassess what and where all the open spaces are in town center after you really figure out all of the land uses. Here's some of the reasons why I say that. I've been in real estate a long time, and sometimes some clients inherit things. And they'll ask me, should I hold on to this? Should I keep this or sell it? And I ask them one key thing. Is this what you would have bought if you had money in the bank and wanted to buy a investment property? So the test is, for them, is that for their purposes, is that what they really needed? Now, the notch has been owned by the city since near incorporation. It existed well before the town center plan was done. We've not had too many changes to the town center plan. So is it smart to do a park on something that you own that wasn't initially planned for that purpose? Or is it smarter to consider all the good work, hold on to that, but really see how the town center shakes out and decide where you really want green spine, open space, and how it all comes together? Or said another way, if it didn't exist, but yet you still had plans for community, private partnerships in parks, is that the location it would be? If it's yes, then it should continue. But if it's I'm not so sure, then I wonder if one should consider reassessing how it all works. And I've also been doing some study. Parks that are done privately are far cheaper than publicly. In most of the city, it's absolutely wise that our parks are not public and private. But in town center, there's a potential opportunity. So could the costs be way down and get a outcome that is far greater and optimizes both private and public? So that's the idea. And so again, it's not a should, but it's a could. All right, appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. All right, and the next, I think was just assign him for an interview. Yeah.
Yes, sorry, I should have to break my name over the air. My name is Zoe John here for the interview.
Perfect.
Very excited, but I can wait.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. And please state your name and city of residence for the record. I will promote the first commenter. Sid Gupta.
Hi, Sid Gupta-Samamish. I am on the Parks Commission, but I'm representing myself and not the Citizens Commission tonight. Good evening, Council. A few weeks ago, I was able to attend the Association of Washington Cities Conference. That was a great experience for me. It gave me perspective on the challenges that people are facing statewide, along with the resources and strategies that towns and cities are using to meet them. I think it'd be great if Samamish could have a presence at future conferences like these, both with elected officials and staff. I think it could help Samamish become a stronger voice in regional discussions as we look towards our future. And stemming from that, as you have worked to further empower our volunteer commissions and with commissioner interviews tonight, I'd like to make a suggestion. We have, as I think we would all agree, a fantastic youth board in Samamish. From my conversations with them, it seems like they want to be more engaged with the city. And that seems like an opportunity that we should be taking advantage of. With our goal of inclusivity and bringing everyone to the table, I wanted to suggest preserving one spot on each of our commissions for representatives from the youth board. And not as an observer or just as a provisory role, but a full-fledged commissioner. At the AWC conference, I learned the city of Lakewood does something similar. They have members of their youth councils serve on their volunteer commissions. Seems to me we have residents who want to engage in the public process, learn how city government functions. There isn't really a better pool to pull commissioners from than our youth boards. And I imagine that looks pretty good on college applications as well. I heard something, and this is not mine, but students are not our future. Dramatic pause. They are present. Saying that our youth are our future implies that they have to wait to be engaged, right? You know, once you reach whatever appropriate age, then, you know, we'll hand the reins over to you. But I think it only makes sense that as we plan our city for Vision 2044, we involve the people who are going to inherit it. The fact that this has been done by other cities means we can go to them and find out lessons learned. For example, because of student turnover, maybe this is a two-year appointment primarily for juniors and seniors. We could get in touch with Lakewood and see what's worked for them. I think the city has already taken steps in this direction. I think, I might be mistaken, but I think that there are a few youth members on the Climate Action Group for the Climate Action Plan. So I thought this might be a neat confluence of a few different opportunities, something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to comment, please raise your hand. I don't see any other commenters. Back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so first up, or second up, I don't really know where we are. We have executive session, land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B. Council may take action when we return. I do see 30 minutes slotted. Is that still correct? Carrie, 30 minutes. Whew. All righty, we'll be back at 7:10.
And council may take action following.
Got it. All right, thank you. All right, welcome back. So next up, we have our consent calendar. I will undertake a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions on there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, then we will move on to our Planning and Parks Commission interviews and appointments. So Krista, am I passing it off to you first?
Good evening. I have emailed all of the applicants the questions ahead of time, and I said it would be three to five-minute time limit, but up to the council's discretion on that. And then we can now proceed. On the agenda, it's Planning Commission first and then Parks and Recreation. And I have put them just in alphabetical order among the interviewees. Thank you.
All right, that sounds good. And then council, so we do have one question for each that I have down here. So one question for the Planning Commission and then one individual question for the Parks Commission. So would it be all right if we had each person introduce themselves and then answer that one question? Does that sound good? All righty. Okay, so first we have Sanjeev. And some might be online, I assume.
And did you want to do the up to five minutes or three minutes?
Oh, sorry. I thought you, yep. I mean, I feel like three minutes is sufficient. Yeah, let's do three.
Okay, I think we can move to Mr. Fung. Mr. DeGrand informed me that he would not be able to interview tonight.
Okay.
So we'll keep trying with the first applicant, but I'm not able to promote him. So we'll go to Mr. Fung. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Victor, yeah, so right over here on the podium, I think the microphone is on, and there will be a countdown. You'll be able to see on the lights, kind of as it counts down. So if you'll introduce yourself.
Sure.
And then your question is, value conflicts are about the way things ought to be, not the way they are now. They highlight our core values and principles. How would you handle value conflicts with the topics that are covered on the Planning Commission? Thank you.
So first off, I'm Victor Fung. I've lived in Samamish since 1990. So it's been a awful, a great 33 years. Progressed my career in biotech, raised two kids. And it's been such a great experience that my two kids are raising their family here in Samamish. And my goal is, and my dream is that my grandkids would consider Samamish their home and hence the reason why I'm here. So first off, in terms of, I have to sort of walk through that question. For one thing, value conflicts are about the way things ought to be. In high-performing organizations, value statements are not in progress. Value statements are value statements. You either believe them or you don't. In my career, treating, developing drugs for patients, we had value statements around being science-based, being database, being focused on patients. Either you do it or you don't. All right? So it's not, it's in progress. The value statements are our values. So based on that, my assumption is that we have value statements in this organization that are solid. And so I would question, the answer to my question, my answer to this particular question is that I would question why certain proposals would even filter if it's against the value. Because a value proposition or a value statement should not only be our true north, our compass, it ought to be a gate. Okay? So if we're talking about proposals and ideas on the Planning Commission, I would vigorously challenge why we would even consider this if this is against the value. If it's not about a proposal but about a particular interaction, well, that's different. That's where we need to hold ourselves accountable to that value statement. And I would be direct. I would confront. And I would ask the same of me. If I'm doing something that's contrary to the value, I want to know. I want to know now so I can make a course correction. So hopefully that answered the question. But again, the question was a bit ambiguous. Thank you.
Thank you for playing along. No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Patricia?
I'm going to attempt to promote the first interviewer.
Yeah.
Again, yes. I think there was a technical glitch. Okay, here it comes. Sanjeev?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, hello there. Welcome.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good. So as you can see on the screen there, you'll have three minutes to introduce yourself. And then I believe you have the question with you about the value conflicts.
Yes.
All right, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start. Respected city council members, my name is Sanjeev Bagharia, and I have been a resident of Samamish for the past 15 years. I have watched our city and surrounding areas grow as more and more people choose to call Samamish their home, just like I did more than a decade ago. I am passionate about preserving the charm and appeal of our city while also promoting its growth and prosperity. Today, I stand before you to address an essential aspect of our work, one that requires us to navigate the intricate realm of value conflicts. As stewards of our community's future, we must recognize that these conflicts arise not from the way things are, but from the way we believe things ought to be. They reflect our core values and principles, and it is our duty to handle them with sensitivity, respect, and an unwavering commitment to serving the greater good. Value conflicts present an opportunity for us to engage in thoughtful and inclusive discussions that can shape the trajectory of our city's development. Here's how we can effectively handle these conflicts within the realm of the Planning Commission. Firstly, we must recognize the richness of perspectives within our community. Each person brings their unique background, experiences, and value. It is essential to create an environment that fosters open dialogue and encourages all voices to be heard. By actively listening and respectfully engaging with different viewpoints, we can establish a foundation of understanding and empathy. By working towards a collective vision, we can create outcomes that reflect the values of our entire community. As a business owner, I strive to hire people who hail from different backgrounds to gain a different perspective. Secondly, let us embrace collaboration in our decision-making processes. Value conflicts can be resolved through the power of collectivism. Engaging stakeholders, residents, and experts in collaborative workshops, public forums, and consultations empower us to benefit from the diverse expertise and perspectives present within our community. By embracing collaboration, we ensure that our decisions are well-informed, inclusive, and representative of the broader collective. There have been many instances during my time at Microsoft where healthy debates helped the team build consensus and choose an outcome that eventually paid off. Thirdly, let us ground our decision-making in evidence-based approaches. Value conflicts often involve complex issues that require careful examination and analysis. By incorporating expert advice, research findings, and data-driven insights, we can navigate the intricate landscapes of our city's planning. These evidence-based approaches provide a solid foundation for making informed decisions that balance various values and interests. Personally, I come from a data-driven background, whether that was at Microsoft using data to retain customers or in my business where we use data to improve our efficiency. Lastly, let us strive for balance and compromise. Value conflicts frequently emerge when competing interests clash. As members of the Planning Commission, we have a responsibility to balance these interests while considering the overall welfare of our community. By seeking compromise and creative solutions, we can address concerns, minimize negative impacts, and maximize the benefits for all. I believe in win-win situations that create value for all stakeholders involved. In conclusion, as members of the Planning Commission, we bear the weighty responsibility of navigating value conflicts that arise in our city's planning projects. By approaching these conflicts with sensitivity, respect, and an unwavering commitment to the greater good, we can transform them into opportunities for growth, understanding, and collaboration. Together, let's forge a path forward that reflects the values and aspirations of our diverse community. A path that leads to a city we can all be proud to call home. I trust that we will handle these value conflicts with the utmost care and consideration as we shape the future of our beloved city. I look forward to serving as a member of the Planning Commission. Thank you for having me today. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you so much. All right, Patricia?
Ms. Johnson has informed me that she'll be unable to attend tonight. The next participant is on Zoom, so I will promote.
Hello, Sudha, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys. Good evening, how are you? Can you see me?
We cannot.
Can you see me now?
No.
Okay.
Perfect. All right.
I'm in IT and I should know this.
Yeah, that's okay. All righty, so as you can see from the timer, you do have three minutes to introduce yourself and then answer the value conflicts question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, City Council, for taking my application and giving me the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Sudha Sumkara, and I've been in Samamish for the last nine years, so you can call me pretty new, but I love Samamish and I, my kids grew up here, they went to Skyline High School, and so I have a lot of, you know, emotional attachment to Samamish. We moved from Las Vegas, so I know how different this is and how safe and how family-friendly Samamish is. So when it comes to the, you know, value conflicts, and our conflicts are normal anywhere and everywhere, in my opinion, we have to listen to each side of it and then, based on what your end goals are defined, and then have a good collaboration and have good discussions between each teams, not just because I'm right or you're wrong, attitude is bad, just listen to, take the facts into, and then, you know, have end goals, right? If you have shared goals and what are you trying to achieve with this Planning Commission, then you define it, like what's good for the city or what's not good for the city, then you go with that options. That, and then having a great collaboration with everybody, that should help, you know, defining the values for us, you know? And in any job or anything, right, like, for example, I'll give you an example. We're working on a ERP program where ERP thinks that they're the big deal, and then I have an asset management team, they think they're the big deal. And so it was a big, like, confusion between these two teams, and we brought them all to the table and then say, like, what's your biggest deal? Now, let's discuss about it. What's, what are the pros and cons, you know? Discuss and see what's good for the whole song transit. So that's when we decided to merge into one, you know, one team and then have shared end goals. Was it fun? At first, it was really difficult because everybody was like, oh, I'm correct, I'm correct. But at the end, when they had, like, shared goals and when they understood each side of it, they came to a common goal and worked towards it. But it's a work in progress. You just have to keep on working on that and actively listen to them with respect, you know? That's how it's working. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity and have a great afternoon, everyone, great evening.
Great, thank you. Mahendra?
I do not see Mahendra. If you are on the Zoom, could you please raise your hand? Okay, I will promote Ravinder, our next interviewee.
Hello there. Can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can hear you, but here it's missing. I have only one. I can't see the council member. Good evening, council members.
Hello. So on your screen, you will see a three-minute timer, so you'll be able to introduce yourself and then answer the question on value conflicts in three minutes. Thank you.
The timer. Good evening, council, and my name is Ravinder Walia. I call Samamish my home. I moved here in 2015 from Kent. So I have been 27 years with the federal government in India, moved to US as an immigrant in 2003, and since then, I'm in the real estate business, buying, selling, building, all aspects of the business. So I am also part of the management of a charity organization. It is Kent Hindu Temple, and I see these kind of value conflict often, so it's nothing new here. But God has made us all different, so it is ought to be there. So how to address is a main question. So it's all about team spirit. We should have a common objective, and we are all volunteers, so we can approach this only, only with the mission. If we have a team spirit, we can achieve it. So first step would be to listen, understand what the issue is being talked about, and then comprehend other points of view, what the other people are saying, and then make a phased-based analysis of the issue and find a common ground. If need seek input from the community, what is in the best interest of the community? So finding a middle ground, like, compromise and collaboration, with that we can approach the final decision, keeping in view the community interest best. Our community best interest should always be our priority. So we are all volunteers, we are not paid. So similarly, we do in the charity, we do everything we can to help the community with the community interest, always taking priority on all other things. And we have success there, resolving those issues by understanding each other's questions and expectations and reaching common grounds and finding solutions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and then, did you see Mahendra on there?
I don't see any other planning commission applicants on the Zoom.
All righty, thank you so much. So then next up, we will fill out our ballots and you'll come collect them. Is that correct?
We'll leave it up to council discretion whether they want to vote or wait for all of the interviews and then vote.
All right, council, you want to keep it fresh or keep moving? Keep it fresh? You guys go with that? Let's vote now on Planning Commission? Let's vote now on planning commission?
Kaylee, just to point a privilege for a second while the votes are coming in. I just wanted to thank everybody that applied for this position. I loved reading the resumes, I loved reading your letters, they, we have such good, smart, capable individuals, it was, this is an extremely difficult process for us because you're all really very qualified, fascinating, and I think have so much to contribute, just thank you so much for applying.
Yeah, thank you so much. I do also want to say, I think Lita will be opening up commission vacancies again this fall for the start term for January. So with that, I want to thank Sudha and everyone for applying, but congratulations, Sudha, your term starts, I think, immediately through January 31, 2027. I'm not sure when the next planning meeting is, but I'm sure someone will be in touch. Yeah. All right, thank you so much, thank you. Okay, so next up, we will move to our Parks and Recreation Commission. So first up, I have Zoe. And this will be the same sort of thing where you have three minutes to introduce yourself. And our question for the Parks and Recreation Commission is what topics interest you the most for the Parks and Recreation Commission to work on during your tenure if you are appointed? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Zoe Jiang. I'm a skyline teacher just across the street. So if I am not teaching, you will find me walking on trails, exploring the parks and take photos. My family have had wonderful moments in the great outdoors. Just the one accident, I, I got struck by lightning, but, oh, sorry, since we are on YouTube, let me clarify, it happened in a different location. It is safe to enjoy the outdoors here in Samamish. Anyway, I survived and I'm here to express my interest in serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission. If I am appointed, the focus will be DEIB. Why? Because the Parks and Recreation Department's mission includes social equity, so we should meet diverse needs, we should prioritize equity and inclusion, and we need to ensure everyone feels connected and valued. Our city has become more and more racially and ethnically diverse. As an immigrant, I feel very lucky, fortunate to have great access to wonderful parks and trails, but however, to truly belong and to take pride in our city, we need, we seek deeper understanding of our land and its historical heritage. So I would say our Parks and Recreation Commission can, can design a guide for families from different backgrounds and cultures, so ideally in different languages, to provide essential information about our park systems, our recreation facilities and activities. And also, speaking of programming, currently the majority activities, I think they happen between May and October. So, but if you look at the cultural calendars, diversity calendars, you can find a lot of exciting themes which we can celebrate throughout the year. So this presents an opportunity for our commission to develop, I would say, winter programs, and we can extend our activities throughout the year. And also, I know the city already has wonderful valuable festival celebrations, but I think there's a need for more diverse celebrations, festival celebrations, because it will help us understand each other and, I would say, appreciate different cultures, and it will also bring visitors outside our city for, to benefit our economy here. So, and I will also advocate for seniors and people with disabilities, and also we think we should support children with special needs. All right, thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, Preeti? This applicant is on Zoom, so I will promote her. Hello there, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we just can't see you yet.
Oh, okay, so start with you. Let me check right. So... Oh Lord, what my iPad is doing? I don't understand. I think I am getting it. Can you see me now?
No, we can't yet. And we can't do it without, if it is not going to work.
So... Now, can you hold on please? Because... Okay, okay, I have to do something. I need to try my camera on, so let me go on settings and something. Wait.
Yeah, that's okay, we can do it with just audio if that works for you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So you'll be able to see on the screen the three-minute timer and you'll have three minutes to introduce yourself and...
Sorry about it.
No, you're, no problem. Yeah, you'll have three minutes to introduce yourself and answer the question. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, council members. So I'm Preeti and I'm living in Shamamis for 16 years, and I love Shamamis a lot, that's why I'm interviewing for a different commission. So, yeah. So I, in our Shamamis, we have three major parks. There are Pine Lake, Beaver Lake, and Ebride. So, I'm just a little bit nervous. If city, if cities giving, I mean, giving me opportunity, I have a three project which is like, depends on funds provided by city. So first is, uh, main, first is like main, we have a main road, city trees, so we can paint that one. The second one is, uh, like, making a park attractive for visitors and everyone, and the third one is for diversity, we can celebrate the Holy Festival, which is the Festival of Color for Indian community. I mean, everybody can enjoy that festival, and in Iskun Temple, we, they are celebrating in redmond, but I want to bring it here so everybody can enjoy that celebration, and yeah. And I, when I was in our commission, uh, commission, two of my teammates are trying to put the monument after entrance of the Pine Lake, but somehow it's not happening, so I would like to make it happen in Beaver Lake or somewhere. So that is my project, I would like to do for Park and Recreation Commission. So, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
And looking forward to getting the opportunity. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous for not start the video call, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. Next up, we have, is it Vai Bhav? Yeah, great.
Can you hear me? Perfect. So, yeah, good evening, members of the council and Mayor Clark, thank you for this opportunity. And following me this forum, you know, to talk about my views, about why I'm interested in this commission. Just a little bit about me, my name is Vai Bhav Shetty. I'm an active combat sports athlete, and before I came to the US, I was a part of the Indian MMA team, where we went for the world championships, and I was also the first World Kickboxing Network Champion from India. Even now, I actively remotely run the World Boxing Council Muay Thai activities for India and Southeast Asia. Out here, I'm a resident of Klani, which comes from Samamish. I have an eight-year-old son who plays soccer, and we use the fields in Klani and around Samamish quite a bit. And, you know, as a sports person and a father, you know, I'm excited for this opportunity, so thank you for that again. The question was about what topic interests me as far as the Parks and, you know, Recreation Commission goes. So when I did apply for this role, even before this question came to me, you know, I had some thoughts in mind, and just to validate the thoughts, I went to the website and there was the old PRO plan which is uploaded on the website, and a lot of my thoughts were validated. So as a father out here, I've realized that there are a lot of young people around, which, which is why I chose this location to locate my family. And I realized that, you know, it's not just my point of view, I believe more than 30% people in the city of Samamish are below the age of 18, and we are one of the youngest cities in King County. Now, the disadvantage of that is, you know, the population has grown immensely, and given the really good school districts we have in the city, the demographic is not going to change anytime soon, and young people need facilities. And the last PRO plan as well, the community did raise this, that we need more ballpark spaces, we need more multi-space, you know, multi-use spaces. I know there are a lot of projects already underway and improvements have taken place, but I believe the way the city has grown and even annexation of Klani itself added, you know, a lot of families just overnight, so the facilities are stretched, in my opinion. Also, the partners we have, because I believe a lot of programs as far as the camps and tournaments go, they are run by partners, and there are some which have done very well, like the baseball league, the lacrosse team here is extremely good, but there is a lot more to do. So as far as my topic of interest goes, you know, anything to do with helping get more, you know, more spaces, multi-use spaces, helping the partners get more activities in our parks, making more use of our open spaces, that means camps, leagues, tournaments across sports, that is what interests me the most. So that is going to be my focus if I'm a part of, you know, this team, and I know the team works already, you know, really hard to get that done, I enjoyed the fireworks as well, you know, just a few, a week ago. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited and I hope to be a part of the team that makes it happen for the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jay?
Hello, council and Mayor Clark. My name is Jay Sekatos, I've lived here in Samamish for 41 years. Back in the days that there was just one strip mall and one restaurant and one grocery store once every week came in. I've been involved with the chamber, I have taught exercise classes to community members here, or community, I have taught pickleball, have tennis, soccer, girls' lacrosse, all within Samamish. So my life is kind of about sports. I love bringing people in and having them get involved and doing things particularly outside. I've been working a lot on promoting pickleball, so for any that follow my Facebook page on Samamish Pickleball will see that it has grown from 50 people to 600-plus people. Every night, there's a group of families, kids, seniors, all out there participating and enjoying and meeting each other. Just the other day Rossi was out there and John James and they were, or John James were playing against each other and going, I know you, I know you. So it's all about community and bringing them together and with a common goal of just getting out and exercising. Just for those that don't know, Samamish or pickleball has grown as the fastest-growing sport in the United States. So Samamish has done a really good job of promoting that sport and, you know, including all walks of ages and people, you know, participating together, and I want to, you know, help grow that. I want to make sure that people, you know, get to know other people, and the way that pickleball works is such that you, when you, when you play tennis, for example, you show up, you play with four people, and you don't talk to anybody else but those people. Pickleball etiquette is such that people rotate in and you put in a paddle and you rotate in and you meet new people, and you play for 15 minutes and you come off and you meet new people again. So that's the part that I really like about it, is it's inclusive of all people, all ages, all genders, and all skill levels. And I just love the fact that these people were there two nights ago going, I know you, you're my, you're my dentist and you're my insurance agent and you're my neighbor's kids, parents, I love that part of it. So it's all about community and bringing people together, so my goal, the answer to the question is to bring more pickleball into the community and bring people in from the outside to come and play in events, maybe a tournament or something like that, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Alrighty, council, if you want to cast your ballot? Alright, council, I want to congratulate Zoe. Congratulations. Thank you so much, everyone, this has been, yeah, we had a really great group of applicants for both of these commissions, and please consider them opening up again in just a few months. We'll definitely be sharing those on all of the social media platforms, so thank you again and congratulations. All right, we are on to unfinished business. We have David Pyle and Audrey with the...
Excuse me, Mayor, we would have to also adopt the resolution.
With the resolutions, yeah. Okay, my bad, my bad. Okay, so first, we have Resolution 2023-1017, appointing Sudha to the Planning Commission. If anyone would like to make that motion?
Still moved.
Second? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, and then the second resolution, appointing Zoe to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Resolution 2023-1018?
Still moved.
Second?
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, thank you for catching me on that. Okay, so now we'll move to unfinished business with David Pyle and Audrey Starcy, our monthly council projects update, the comp plan, housing action plan, climate action plan, and public works update.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Uh, can I get a confirmation that my screen is sharing?
All good.
Great, thank you very much. David Pyle, Community Development. Um, tonight, we have our monthly update on major planning projects. As promised, we have teamed up with Public Works and tonight will be the first joint project update provided by myself and Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director. As both departments have projects making their way through the community and legislative process, we felt it best to bundle them together. We continue to be quite busy. Over the next few months, there will continue to be many meetings on the Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and soon, Critical Areas. I've listed the scheduled meetings here through the end of September. Although, keep in mind, there could be meetings added or changed as we continue our efforts on these planning projects. There is a lot of background work you don't see here and staff continue to be quite busy keeping these projects on track. In addition, to Planning Commission and City Council meetings, we are also listing Community Advisory Group meetings as well as other outreach efforts. As summer winds down and we transition back to the school year, we are hosting a fall block party and we are hopeful to bring community members together and learn about progress on various planning efforts in a fun event. This is planned for September thirtieth and there will be more details on this soon. For the Comprehensive Plan, we continue to monitor information put out by the state and we also continue to evaluate different approaches being taken by neighbor cities. A good example is Bothell's approach to H B eleven-ten compliance. We'll talk more about that in the coming weeks. We have also had opportunity to meet with P S R C for feedback on our approach to our Comprehensive Plan update. P S R C staff cautioned us against adding too much capacity with this update beyond the assigned growth target in housing allocation. Although our immediate focus has been setting land use and housing parameters before switching to full review of other elements, we have also began queuing up review of different elements of the Comprehensive Plan for review. Most of this work will continue into the fall. Here you see highlighted in yellow upcoming meetings related to the Comprehensive Plan. Note that we have not listed all outreach efforts. However, we did want to highlight outreach related to the transportation element, which will take place at Samamish Commons Farmers Market in July. The Climate Action Plan is now in the phase of developing strategies and actions that respond to city goals. We are working internally and with the Community Advisory Group on this effort and we have begun drafting a Climate Action Plan document. The goal is a public release, working draft for the September sixth Parks Board and Planning Commission Joint Meeting. And we are hopeful that we can make this joint meeting an extended meeting as we will have quite a bit of material to cover. We will work with the City Manager to see if we can make this work. Here you see highlighted in blue upcoming meetings related to the Climate Action Plan Update effort through September of twenty-twenty-three. Finally, we wanted to again remind everyone watching of another fun planning project to look forward to in the fall and into twenty-twenty-four. The much anticipated Critical Areas update is now underway and we are working on background analysis, including the required best available science review and inventory of existing regulations. We are also in review of the history of Critical Areas rules in Samamish to help understand where changes have been made over time. We will be completing early project outreach starting this fall and we will be delivering an initial overview on the update process at the upcoming October Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey for updates on the transit plan.
Thank you, David. We did have an open house. David, if you could please advance to the next slide, thank you. And, uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. As David mentioned, I'm Audrey Starcy, the Public Works Director for the city. Um, here this evening, just wanted to provide a quick update on the transit plan and we'll continue these updates in partnership with D C D going forward every month. We did have an open house in, um, June twenty-ninth and the recording is available on the Transit Plan webpage. We also are wrapping up our statistically valid portion of our, uh, survey that went out to the community in June and we will soon be opening that, that survey up to the public. And we're just finalizing our final review of that survey, but I've heard that it has gone very well. And we are also finalizing our existing conditions report for the Transit Plan and that is anticipated to be available on our webpage this week as well. I provided some links on the right-hand side of your screen. Um, many of the projects that we're talking about this evening are, can be found through our Big Ideas web, website. Um, so I encourage you to go in there if you haven't signed up already for, um, these project updates, please go do so. Um, David, next slide, please. And as I mentioned, we are really hoping for, um, a lot of community engagement with the Transit Plan and all of these plans. So, I did discuss the signup, um, through the, any of these, uh, Big Ideas through the website. Right now, we also have something specific to the Transit Plan. It's an interactive comment map. Um, there are instructions on the webpage as well as, um, our transportation planning team provided some great instructions in the recorded video from the June twenty-ninth open house. And we are planning on another open house. That'll be a hybrid open house planned for early fall and more dates, um, will be coming out soon. Those will also be on the webpage. Thank you. That is it.
All right, council, do you have any questions for David or Audrey? Great, thank you both.
Thank you.
Looking good, can't wait for the block party. Okay, um, next, we are going to transition to our notch property. Uh, we have Anjali, Kevin, Michelle, and Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Your next topic is a discussion of concept designs for the notch property, a city-owned parcel that is part of the Lower Samamish Commons Park. For those watching, this parcel will be the southern end of the future Green Spine shown in the Town Center Plan. And the Green Spine will be a publicly accessible pedestrian-oriented corridor in the town center. We were in front of council exactly three months ago to hear your hopes, dreams, and concerns for this parcel. And since then, the consultant has, uh, put together some early concept sketches and we have, uh, gathered feedback from the community through a survey. And we will be sharing that with you tonight. Um, we will also be going in front of the Parks Commission next week. We would typically have gone the first week and then come to you, but with the Fourth of July, that is going to happen next week. So, we are excited to get your feedback tonight and we are not looking for all of you to necessarily vote on your preferred concept, just your feedback, what you like, what you don't like. And then the next step will be for the consultant to draw up a preferred plan that could be just, um, further refining one of the concepts you see tonight, or it could be a combination. And it could take its own course. So, with that, I will turn it over to Kevin, our Deputy Director, to introduce the staff and the consultant team and make the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali, and, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, we are at an exciting point with this notch project and it's always fun to see these, uh, concepts, um, come together. And, um, it's very likely that you have seen these projects and, or these, uh, concepts in one form or another, be it at, uh, the Farmers Market or on the online survey, Town Hall Meeting, at the Fourth of July, Farmers Market. These guys have been working really hard the last few weeks in particular and we really appreciate that. So, um, our team, um, uh, that's working on this project is being led by Michelle Arab. Michelle is our park, um, um, project manager. And, um, we're, uh, being, um, assisted with the consulting firm of M X M and Scott Melbourne, principal there. So, um, it's, uh, things are coming together nicely and I'm really excited for you to see this. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Um, we're having a little bit of a technical delay, so I'll be one moment here. All right, um, thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Tonight, we'll discuss the three notch property concept design options developed by M X M Landscape Architecture. Before we just start the discussion, I'll briefly review the project background and timeline for concept design. And then I'll hand the presentation over to Scott Melbourne, who will share information about our outreach efforts and lead the design option discussion. Uh, we'll go to the next one. We'll start with an aerial showing the location of the notch property in red, south of Southeast Fourth Street and extending north from Samamish Commons. Uh, the notch site has eleven feet of grade change and is approximately a hundred and eighty-five feet by three hundred and eighteen feet, which is roughly comparable in size to the Upper Commons Plaza, which is out these windows, if you could see out there. Though the notch property sits outside the Town Center Core Mixed Use Area, the site is identified as a part of the Green Spine, which was first envisioned in the Samamish Town Center Plan and then was further refined with the adoption of the Town Center Infrastructure Plan. These two documents guide the development of the notch property as it relates to the Green Spine. As described within the Town Center Infrastructure Plan, the Green Spine is a central component of the core mixed-use area and is a linear open spa, open space with plazas, hardscape, and planted areas. The notch's zoning and guidelines developed in the Town Center Infrastructure Plan provide the initial framework for the site's design. And because of the work already done, this project is starting with concept design instead of a typical master plan process. Shown conceptually in this plan, that was there, there we go. The Green Spine follows a general north-south alignment and it's, and it's composed of a hierarchy of spaces categorized into three zones, primary, secondary, and neighborhood transition. The notch site is identified as a secondary zone of the Green Spine and should have a linear park-like character with areas that welcome a range of community activities and programming. There are four main phases of concept design. Site investigation and analysis and park program have been completed. We're wrapping up the Concept Plan Development Design Option Phase, which has included multiple touchpoints with the community and stakeholders. And tonight, we're looking forward to getting your feedback. As well, due to the Fourth of July and revised schedules, we'll meet with the Parks and Recreation Commission on July nineteenth. In, um, September, the concepts will be revised into one preferred plan that we'll share with the community and the Parks and Recreation Commission and council at the end of September and early October. Once consensus is reached, the CIPA process will begin. And following CIPA determination, staff will return to City Council for formal adoption of the concept design in early December. Now, I'll hand the presentation to Scott, who will tell you more about our community outreach and lead the discussion about the design options.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Uh, it's wonderful to be with you here again, uh, tonight. I say again, because I've been within this vicinity, uh, for now, uh, four weeks in a row, I think. And I'll be back again next week with the Parks and Rec Commission, which would be great. So, um, so we, of course, as Michelle was describing there, are sharing with you the process and results of this notch site design options survey. Our community outreach efforts began with the Earth Day event in April. And at that time, we were promoting the programming survey that was underway. Uh, we were asking folks for feedback on what activities ought to be incorporated into the notch site's concept design. So, this is before any of our own drawings were being done, but as you see there, um, some, some of the young people in the community were contributing their drawings. It was great that we got such, uh, such clear feedback from folks. Um, responses made clear that parks are very important to this community, um, as you see there, uh, on the slide, with specific support for ease of access, sustainable design, passive uses, seamless connections, and a unique center place for here at the notch site in particular. As a next step, we, uh, have returned to the public again, but this time to ask for feedback on different options for the actual concept design of the notch site. Now, uh, as you know, and as a reminder, uh, you see here in the photos of what that context is as it is, as we see it today. Um, and of course, part of our challenge is to really be thinking to the future and how much it will be changing. Ultimately, that this site will be an important part of the Green Spine within the Town Center Development and buying elements outlined in the Town Center Infrastructure Plan, as Michelle has described earlier. Zooming in just a bit, um, here you can get a better sense for what this more immediate future context will be with a notch linking the Lower Commons to the south and continuing to the Green Spine to the north. So, we see this as a really exciting opportunity to build connections, uh, between these important areas of the city. We also paid particular attention to views and what those visual connections to the commons will be. So, here you get a sense for, um, of looking to the south and, in particular, um, how there's this layered sequencing of tree masses descending into the commons that we, again, see as a really great opportunity to build connections. So, now I'll share a few words about these three sketch options and that we'll be discussing further and that we've given names to, uh, that we found quite helpful in making reference. That's not just option A, B, C. So, uh, we call them the Glade, the Knot, and the Plateau. So, in this first option, there's a distinct sense of discovery when moving through the site that's created from a canopy of clustered trees that are largely planted within layered mounds. All this together helps create an expanded sense of scale within the site, um, that transitions then into the commons to the south. Here you get a sense of that circulation flow with a perched green hillside that's oriented towards, um, a primary gathering space that could be used for, I think, really a whole variety of events. And there, um, you see, we're giving you some estimate of what that capacity might be. As we were all reminded on the Fourth of July, of course, I mean, in a way, you could quadruple these numbers if, if really pressed to. Um, but it gives you a sense kind of in the lower side of, you know, if one was, if it was a group of people having a picnic on the other side, if it was more of a, an actual, um, seated event. In the second option, visitors are invited into the site with interlinked spaces of mass and void, where subtle changes to the grade work together with the site's existing topography to define an overlook platform at the center of the site with views south towards the commons and a water, uh, wall at its base. Here again, you get a sense of what that arrangement of spaces would be and how, in this scheme, the idea is to have these concentric reams of circulation that, again, gives an enhanced and increased sense of scale for the site. And also, in that scheme, you get a sense for how kind of the carrying capacity of the gathering spaces is significantly larger. And then finally, here in our third option, there's a sequence of terraces created by this kind of peeling back of the gentle slope that moves through the notch site. And... And this peeling back creates a range of both paved and planted gathering spaces linked by pathways. And so then, as far as the gathering spaces are concerned, in this scheme, it's more of a focus on kind of mid-scale, kind of gathering spaces, and then that have different kind of connections to their context. So those are the schemes that we shared with the public. These options and related questions were shared through an online survey that was launched mid-June, and we actually just closed yesterday morning. And of course, we also met with the public a number of times during this event, during this phase of things, with three in-person events that were fantastic opportunities to hear directly from the public. And I'll say it was just, honestly, a really special opportunity to get a sense for this community. People were, I think, genuinely appreciative of the potential of the site and being asked for their input. And that was really, yeah, it was just great. It was wonderful. So the results of this. So in the end, we had 272 responses, a number that we're quite happy with. And I'll note that, in general, the general tone of feedback was distinctly consistent throughout that process. We were keeping a watch on things as it went, and the tendencies were clear. There on the right, you can see that the Glade and the Knot received the most votes as a first or second choice when combined. In reviewing feedback, where folks were able to write in on specifics of what they liked or didn't like about the different schemes, we see that there's clear support for many, many trees, as many as possible, it would seem, for some. A tendency towards curved pathways, or what we would describe as more naturalistic forms. Water features were also mentioned, which was quite interesting, because when we asked that question a number of weeks earlier without showing drawings, there wasn't especially strong interest. But then, once we had the drawings, that first choice, the Glade, did not include a water feature intentionally to gauge the public's interest. And there are many comments saying, "I love the Glade option, but I wish there was a water feature." Or people would say, "Actually, I chose the Plateau because I think it's the best water feature." And so that was quite interesting. And then, of course, open gathering spaces. I think the interest in those open gathering spaces is, in part, because of that interest in passive uses that came out of the earlier survey. But then also, folks really were recognizing this is an opportunity to meet their neighbors and come together. And that's another thing that I want to make sure I mention before we wrap up here, is that it was really impressive to see how folks could quite quickly develop an opinion on what they wanted. There were very, you know, we had, out of those 272 responses, you know, nearly 140 of those were in person, so that's 140 times that we talked through the whole project and all that. There's almost never questions of, "Hey, I don't understand. How does this work?" Or, "What's happening here?" It's more like, "Oh, I like that," or "I like this." So that was fantastic. Final slide here for me. So that's really what, oh, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned in the previous slide there. In addition to looking at these schemes, our later report, though, come later summer, will include more specific costing information, which we know is always incredibly important. It's important to have that feedback into the design process. At this preliminary stage, we see no inherent or significant cost differences between the preliminary options shown. You know, a lot of that is going to come down to some specific questions about elements that are included or are not included, not the general kind of geometries of the schemes that you see here. So that is what we wanted to share with you this evening. As a reminder, we'll return to the Parks and Recreation Commission and Council at the end of September and early October. And thank you for your input on the, at that time, we'll be asking for your input on the preferred plan and seeking your approval to move forward on the non-project SEPA process. So thank you very much.
All right, Council. Councilmember Brenda Pore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some clarifying questions before we go ahead. So I wanted to understand the Notch Site future context that you have. Is that something, is that conceptual? Is that, so that is one question. So if you could explain that. And then, the other slides where you have, you know, where's this kind of slide?
Yeah.
If you could just explain what do those darker circles mean? I mean, I can get the lines, but then there's that purple thing. What is that?
Sure. No problem. No problem. So that, your first question about that future context, so this site, you know, is a very, from our perspective, interesting scale in that it's relatively large as an urban landscape, but small compared to, you know, the Commons or something like that. And so the edge conditions are going to be really, really important to understand, to have the design function the way that we want to. So because of that, we had the design team, with the, with staff's help, reached out to the private developers, who will be putting forward proposals for those adjacent properties. And they were nice enough to meet with us and to share with us some of those preliminary drawings. So those, building footprints and things you see there are from their teams. And so we're looking to those, really, at this stage, mostly to get a sense of the massing and the facades that will be helping to find the space. But then, most importantly, is seeing where the pedestrian connections ought to be made. And so we certainly are very interested in, we see that as like a positive thing, to pull in connections and activate the space as much as possible. So in all these schemes, that's where you see, and as is suggested there in that plan that you held up, there's the connections to the east and west, but then also to the north and south. And then, your following question to that, as far as what we're seeing in these drawings, so really, what we're seeing here, this is our way at a kind of cursory level to just highlight what we were thinking of as these important spaces. And so, you know, what's in the darker circle here, we label as a primary gathering space, and that's going to be, in this scheme, that's hard paved, so it could be, there could be performances and things like that. Whereas that perched green gathering space, it's perched because it's a little bit of an angle, and that could be turf, for example. And then that somewhat awkwardly colored shape there is just trying to highlight where the section is cut. And so that's just highlighting that, the drawing on the left side of the slide, what you're seeing there is, to the left, is where there's a platform, so that person on the left of that image at the railing is looking out towards the Commons. So all these kind of drawings will be expanded upon and as the preferred scheme gets developed.
Councilmember Howe.
Thank you. You know, lovely design work. Just thrilled to look at these because they're so much fun to just wrap your head around. I did think that one of our commenters this afternoon, Paul, had a good point about timing. So I would love it if you could help me understand timing for something like this, vis-à-vis how this slots in with the other design work that is also in place, because I thought that was fair. And then I have a few more questions, but we could start with that one.
That is a great question. And our favorite line to this has been a chicken-and-egg situation. Who goes first? So it was at some point last year, as we've been doing development review, as to when, you know, the developer wants to know, what is the vision for this space? And we look at the developer and say, "What are you going to build at the edges?" And so at some point, it actually got added to the work plan. Council added this to the work plan for last year, and then we were short-staffed, so we waited till we were able to backfill a vacancy, so it's taken a little longer. But the idea was that, for a city-owned space, you want to get community input to know what the vision is. There is some guidance in the Town Center Infrastructure Plan. So that's what we've embarked on, is this journey to find out what is it that the community wants for this space. And then this is just, as you can see from the nature of the sketches, really early stages in design, there isn't a plan to really execute any of this right now. So we would come back with a more refined plan with potential costs and even take it through SEPA process and then potentially have it adopted, and then it could just sit until, you know, the developer maybe moves a little further in the process. You would also, again, back to our pros plan, be able to decide, do you want the city to, you know, lead the way and do this, or do we want to kind of wait for the right time? And it has to be a seamless experience to the end-users who come into this space, you know. There's a lot of grade changes, and so spaces kind of have to flow into each other. So it is a great question, and it's pretty critical how it all gets built.
And I remember this conversation from earlier when we were talking about approving this process. So this is an extraordinarily important project then, because it sets the tone potentially and go forward, and really just helps create a concept or an idealization potentially into the minds of the developers that will be working on the properties as it goes forward. So spending time with it's going to be, I think, important. I'm curious if anyone, I'm going to ask a second question about the Plateau. The Plateau, if you had used more organic lines, curved, wondered where that might have landed, it wondered if that came up as a comment at all, because it's also very interesting. They're all three very, very workable. So, you know, I think that I would feel happy and feel like we had something wonderful with any of these directions. Did anybody say anything about the jagged lines versus curved and organic?
Yeah, you know, I've been at this for more than 20 years, and the harshness of the reaction to the angular geometries still is shocking to me. So I'm sure that, yeah, taking a different stab at that, those geometries, it would have at least a more positive response. I would say that the tree consideration, you know, it was, really, this exercise is, more than anything, is an attempt to tease out the interest more specifically from the public. And so, more than it being some kind of contest of what is the winner. And so, for example, in the, so the geometry is one thing that was teased out, and then, you know, it's really the tree coverage as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought that was very interesting. I sort of thought that that might be the case. Another question, or just a point, is that when you're going through and kind of costing each of these different scenarios, of course, I'm still interested in the maintenance part because that has to go into the cost component and just over time.
Yeah.
Over time. Is it going to get better or worse? For example, love water feature idea, they can be expensive to maintain. So just need to have some reality and expectations kind of centered around that. Have, what is this substrate? Is this grass? Is it some kind of gravel? Like in the Knot, for example, it's not clear to me what the substrate is.
Of existing or kind of what would be included?
What the plan is, is it going to be?
Yeah. So in, so we've not done fill calculations yet. I mean, the idea is that this site, I would say, one of the benefits of it, even though it's going to be an urban site, but it is one that, for now, is on-grade. And so, and it's strange to say that that's a luxury, that you just have ground, but in a way, it's a real luxury, because so often, we're building on structure and having to deal with kind of those limitations. And so, as it currently stands, let's imagine all of this is, you know, it's real soil that could have plant material above it, and there's real mass. I mean, if we were really pushing something like that second scheme, the Knot, to the extreme, you know, we could actually make use of that volume. And there's really interesting precedent for projects that make use of that, kind of, almost within the balloon of that green mound for storage or something like that. But as it's currently imagined, at least at this stage, we're starting off more simply.
And my last question has to do with safety call boxes. When I look at all the trees, for example, in the Glade scenario, this is something that I don't think that we have anywhere in the city, but it's a question that I'd like to pose. The Glade actually looks like, if there is such a thing, too many trees. And I question whether we should contemplate safety call boxes, and if you guys have explored that. And that's my last question.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I would just acknowledge that all of that would certainly be taken into consideration. I think especially, you know, this is one very preliminary, pretty simple way of representing an idea of a design. You know, in the end, part of the thinking and even one of the press images included there in the Glade is, for some projects, where they're kind of thin-trunked but masked trees, you know, and so it's more of a screening rather than walls kind of that happens. But all of that's really well taken, and I just want to also make sure I acknowledge that your point about maintenance also is really felt. You know, from our perspective, a landscape, a built landscape should look its absolute worst on opening day, you know, and it should only get better. And we have zero interest in kind of overshooting the possibility and the budget of what gets built. And so that's also part of what, even if we're just in this preliminary conceptual design phase now, is we're starting to calibrate. And I think that's probably a two-way conversation, as the public and council get a sense of what the possibilities are, then also kind of coming down to reality.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Good. I also wanted to address the maintenance question. And we did meet with Mike Keller, Superintendent of Maintenance, I believe that's his title, and talk through the options with him. And, you know, his feedback was that the Knot would probably be the option that required the least amount of maintenance, and that the Glade may require more, just because of the berms and the planting and continuing to have that look good over time. So that is something that we, you know, sought to get that feedback and are thinking about that in the development of the designs as well.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. If I were to choose, I really like the Glade and the Knot. Those two options seem to me to be the most appealing to me, because I like kind of the minimal hardscape that's involved in that. And I'm kind of starting to think about parks from a climate change and environmentally, an environmental opportunity for us all, especially our new ones going forward. And I noticed in the Glade, you had used the phrase mini forest. And I just wondered if you had thought or know anything about the Miyawaki method, the Japanese method of mini foresting, which you're able to build a mini forest even in a very tiny amount of space, like maybe even in the size of two parking lots or in the size of a tennis court, and you pack it with native plants. And it requires, and from a standpoint of maintenance, it requires a bit of maintenance, maybe for the first couple of years, but it really is self-maintaining over time. And it apparently produces, in about 10 years, it's like a fully functioning forest in its own right, in a small way, and sequesters large amounts of CO2 as well. So when I saw mini forest, I got very excited. So I just wondered if that was kind of what you were thinking and that you're, and if not, it may be a method you might want to explore. It seems to be several countries in Europe are, seem to be going in that direction. And so, those were, those are really my two things when I think about the park, is kind of the environmental opportunity that we have here to maybe kind of play around with, drought-tolerant planting and that kind of thing, that we have that opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to know if you had any thoughts about the Miyawaki method.
Thanks so much. Yeah, that was exactly part of what was in our minds with that scheme. And in a way of abstracting it a bit, perhaps, would be to say, we're thinking, and we will continue to explore, how to maximize the potential of a given scheme. And so, for example, something like the Glade probably only makes sense if there's a distinct recognized value in that intensity of the plantings. And the challenge of the maintenance of the plantings is actually part of the whole story of kind of what that landscape is all about. I don't know that that's necessarily where this project will lead. I mean, we'll see kind of what the next steps are, but that's exactly the kind of thing that we had in mind, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
First off, I wanted to thank you for being at so many of our events. I think I met you, Scott, a couple of times, and I've seen Michelle at least at three of the events. And it's been great seeing you there, like engaging with the residents, and it's great for the residents to see that we, you know, value their opinions. I just had a few comments, and I think I mentioned that to you when I was at one of the events, that I did prefer the Glade. The Knot somehow, for me, still seems as though it's an event waiting to happen, and it's being flanked by, like, resident residential areas. So I kind of wonder if that's, if people are going to feel like, feeling that it's too precious and that you don't want to, like, step in there. I remember mentioning that the Plateau seemed kind of angry, but, you know, looking at the pictures, the environment pictures, like, I totally think differently now, because, you know, from an overview, bird's eye view, it does. Because, you know, from a overview, bird's eye view, it does feel that way. But when you talk, when you see the pictures and how it's layered, it makes me think there's a lot of opportunities to explore what those paths could look like. And I think kids in particular would really like that, especially if you change the texture or the, or the surface. And it's like an area where it's like, oh, I want to walk on that, even if it's like a slightly raised platform and then it changes into something else. So it being such a small area, I think there's like some opportunities for some like interactive play, you know, along those lines. But I, I, you know, I think you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Trane, do you have anything before I go?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just say that, yeah, the glade is my favorite and, but I'd add the water feature to it. And I like the, I like the knots water feature, but I would look at which one is easier to maintain and construct. So then it's a cost issue to me. So, good job. And it was like Councilmember Lamb said, it was really nice to, to meet the team and watch you guys interact with the public. It was, I see you were having fun and you've expressed that again here tonight, how much enjoy, how much joy you got from that. So thanks for sharing that with us.
Yeah, so I definitely am for the glade as well. The only thing with water feature, all I think is like slip trips and falls and mosquitoes. I don't know if that's a thing, unless it'd be moving quickly enough, but like, just like that little water thing out here, I'm like, I don't know. So I don't really know about water features. I don't really know how they work or what they do, or, you know, obviously I'm assuming maybe there's some stormwater element or something useful out of it. But yeah, glade for sure. And thank you all. This is great. Can't wait to see what else the parks comes up with for us next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we are transitioning, is everyone doing okay? Good? All right. To King County rate restructure with Republic Services contract. So I think Audrey will be joining us as well as Jen, Doug, and is it Jeanette from Bin There Consulting? Very clever.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, I am Audrey Sarsky, Public Works Director. And this evening, we are providing a presentation on the proposed contract amendment with the city's solid waste service provider, Republic Services, in order to incorporate King County's new rate structure into our customer rates. Jeanette Jergensen with Bin There Consulting. It is indeed a clever name. The city's consultant will be leading the presentation this evening. And Jen Rubinelli, our Management Analyst and Doug McIntyre, Senior Transportation Planner with the city, will be, and myself will be available to assist with any questions. So Jeanette, whenever you are ready for the presentation, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeanette Jergensen from Bin There Consulting, and I'm helping the city with the solid waste contract amendment due to the King County rate restructure. Next slide, please. The purpose of this presentation is to receive direction from City Council on approving the proposed contract amendment with Republic Services to incorporate King County's new rate restructure into customer rates. In 2022, King County decided to change its rate structure from a straight per ton tipping fee to a utility model with a fixed annual charge per city and a reduced ton tipping fee. And the fixed annual charge, I'll refer to possibly as FAC as we go through this presentation. This change is allowed by the cities in our local agreement with King County. And all city contracts with holler billing, including Samamish, must have their contracts amended to allow for this FAC, because it is new and not previously in the contracts. The county assigns the FAC to cities based upon their garbage tonnage contribution. So for example, King County's FAC for next year is $22.6 million. Samamish has approximately 1.8% of the overall city tonnage of all the cities in King County that are contributing. And so Samamish's FAC is about $400,000. Republic Services is going to collect the FAC from customers to pay the county this $400,000. The city will not collect or pay this money. We are just managing the contract and allowing the amendment so Republic can collect this money to pay the county. The FAC must be distributed across the customer base. We've worked to find the easiest and most equitable way to do it, which is to use the existing model of the disposal component of the rate. And the King County tipping fees in fact will be adjusted annually. So this presentation is just going over the calculations, not the exact rates that customers are going to see. Next slide, please. So in your packets, it's a much more detailed description of the calculations adjustments. I'm going to go through a very high level overview. And again, at the end, I'm happy to answer any questions. So the FAC will be converted into a per ton rate based upon the previous full year of garbage tonnage. And then that calculation will be added to the King County tipping fee to create what we're calling the composite commercial rate, or the CCR. So for example, Samamish's 2024 FAC is about $400,000. The 2022 tonnage, which is the previous full year that we have data for, is about 12,000 tons. So the per ton FAC will be 33.33 per ton. That will be added to the King County tipping fee to create the composite commercial rate. Because we're using data that is so far in the past, we've worked with Republic to put in an adjustment. So they will adjust the CCR each year after the first year, based upon the difference of the initial FAC that we've created and the updated FAC. So in fall of 2024, we'll adjust the 2025 rates by the difference of what we originally calculated and what actually occurred based upon tonnage. And the adjusted CCR number will be used instead of the tipping fee to create the annual disposal adjustment. So again, much more detail in your packets and I will be happy to answer any questions, but just an overview on that. Next slide, please. So customer rates in the past have been calculated based upon the King County tipping fee and CPI changes. Now we're just adding a third component, which is the FAC. The FAC will be included in the customer rates in the disposal component, so it will not be listed out separately. This is all going to be happening behind the scenes. So customers, unless they know about it, really won't even know this is happening. The average resident with a $40 per month garbage bill would expect to pay approximately 70 cents more per month for disposal on their bill. And there is also going to be an annual CPI increase. We will not have that number until the fall. Next slide. So King County's rate restructure is designed to be revenue neutral. And by that I mean, the county is expecting to collect as much revenue with the straight tipping fee as they would with the reduced ton tipping fee and the FAC. And you'll notice in the previous slide that I said there was going to be a 70 cent disposal increase for households. And that is because the rate restructure coincides with an annual 9.6% increase in solid waste fees. So the rate restructure is revenue neutral, but there is an increase in fees. Samamish's FAC is expected to be about 400,000. Again, this will be released, the final number will be released in the fall. We'll also have the CPI numbers in the fall, so we'll have exact rates by October 1st. Next slide, please. So staff recommends the city council approve the proposed contract amendment with Republic Services to incorporate King County's new rate restructure into customer rates. Next slide. And the next steps would be to adopt the amendment at the July 18th council meeting. Next slide. And I went through that pretty quickly, but we're here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, great. Thank you. Councilmember Howell.
Thank you for trying to make this an understandable and relatable presentation, which I appreciate. My question has to do with, I'm hoping you can help me understand better. It's actually from our packet on page 66. And we talk about, as the county implements its aggressive waste reduction and diversion programs, disposal revenues are expected to be reduced. So we're trying to explore different ways to improve revenue stability. I understand that part, so that we can fund current and future waste reduction programs. Is there a value in being more transparent? For example, in saying, okay, we're going to reduce this and we're going to up that. And the reason why this is going up is because specifically, we, we have to fund new technology and innovation in waste reduction. Does that make sense?
I cannot speak on behalf of the county, but I believe that it, there's twofold. One is that we do expect waste to be decreased. So we're going to have less garbage tonnage and therefore need a higher rate to cover costs. And then the second is they were looking at, as I understand it, just to move to a utility model, as most utilities are, where just like your power or your water, there's a fixed charge which covers fixed costs and then a variable rate. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah, it kind of does. It's, I think the way that we communicate information around waste is flawed and not as coherent as it could be to help a population understand what's going on, because it's confusing. You know, we, we, we try this way, we try that way, and the last thing we hear is, nobody will buy our refuse. So now we're putting everything into the landfill. So it's, I, I would, this is not your problem. I think it is our problem, however, to find a better way to communicate with residents, what's truly happening with their refuse, what, what is, what can they do to, that makes sense for, for them? And how do we support that with education and training around it? So that's just a bigger hairball that I just bring out onto the table for a second. Because it's just, yeah, just coughed it up. Coughed it up. I think it's appropriate, totally appropriate. But it's, it's these types of things that are confusing for people and they, they understand a rate increase because of inflation, but not because we're putting less into the landfill. So I, just urging us to get smarter about how we communicate this to, to our people so that it's more clear. There was someplace else I was going to go with this, but for right now, I'll, I'll, I'll stop and leave you with that, with that imagery.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So going back to that exact same sentence, aggressive waste reduction and diversion programs, what are those? And what, what are they diverting? And do they have percentages of what they're diverting to, you know, like are they estimating what's going to go where? Just what the, like I only, actually know of only one program, which is the REPLUS Plan, but I don't know of any other solid waste programs for diversion.
As I understand it, the REPLUS is a big driver in this. And one thing that I didn't mention is that the county has committed to creating a website that has more explanation on the FAC, why they've created it and how it's being funded. It is not up yet, but we expect to see a draft of it by the end of the year. And hopefully that will answer both of your questions as well as the community members' questions.
Okay. Are other cities using the, the exact same process we are, the composite commercial rate? Like, are they using the exact same formula we are? Are they using a different formula?
As I understand it, all of the Republic cities are using this formula. Waste management is using the straight composite commercial rate without an adjustment. And the ecology cities have a much more in-depth way of calculating it. So when the county assigned this new rate restructure, it was up to the cities and the haulers to figure out the best way to implement it. So each hauler has a slightly different way of doing it.
Is everybody getting to the same numbers though, regardless of the, the, the different process?
Pretty much. The county, the fixed annual charge is set by the county and needs to be paid by the hauler on behalf of the city, regardless of what happens to the tonnage during the year. So if your FAC is set at 400,000, if you increase or reduce waste over that year, Republic still has to pay the county the 400,000. So there's a little bit of risk in there, which is why we have the adjustment piece.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
That actually, just that explanation made this much more, make much more sense. Counsel, do you have any other questions? And is this coming back to vote on next week or consent or, okay?
Yes. Excuse me, we are hoping to add this to the consent calendar for next week's meeting.
Okay. Because I, I'm assuming we don't really have a choice? Question mark? Yeah, so I'm like, yeah, go for it. I don't really know what to do here, so, yeah, I don't know. Counsel, do you have anything else or any other thoughts? Oh, are you sure, Councilmember Howell?
Yes, I'm sure. I, I would really love to know what the 37 other cities have said about this. Is, by any chance, is there a way to learn that or just to understand?
King County has said they are tracking the progress of the contract amendments with the different cities. I can only speak upon the cities that I'm working with. And so far, we are in the council process.
Okay, because I, I was hoping you were consulting for other cities and perhaps you'd be able to share with us what other cities, what their reactions have been.
I, I think most of them are similar to the mayor, where it's just like, well, we, we kind of have to do this. And the trust staff has gone through the process to find the best way to make it happen for our residents.
Okay. Is there a way to leverage the 37 cities to do a communication push with King County to just do a better job? Because it's a coalition that's working not for us right this second. And I'm wondering, is there a way to turn it in a different direction?
We have discussed at SWAC and MSWAC about having the county have that website and some more education to the public on exactly what this money is being used for and a little bit more transparency. I've not seen any drafts of that, but it is on my list to follow up with them if I haven't heard anything by late this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Napuray.
Sorry, just a quick question. I believe the Redmond is already sort of working along the same lines and so is Mercer Island. My question was, I think I learned that the city of Samamish has two contracts with Republic. So this is going to be uniform, right? It is not like just for one contract or the other, it's going to be for both? Or does that not matter? Does it matter?
So this is for the city managed contract. The other contract is managed by the UTC. And so that is being handled in a very similar fashion.
Okay, so that is also, so will that also come to the council? No, right? Okay.
No, Councilmember. So because it's under a separate contract with the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, we don't have any purview over that. So that's why she was saying that, you know, it's just the contract that we have, the city issues with Republic as opposed to the one the UTC issues.
All right. I'm not seeing the other hands. I think this is probably good to come back on consent. But yeah, thank you so much for your help and explanation. And I'm sure you will let us know when that website goes up.
Absolutely.
Of course.
Cool.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. So next we are on to reports. I'll start with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have a specific report, but I did want to say.
I don't have a specific report, but I did want to say a huge thank you to all the community for coming out to the July 4 celebration. It was extremely well-attended, and the parks team and everyone associated did an amazing job to have everything ready to go. And everyone had a great time, and it was fantastic weather. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone, to all the council, for coming out and for the community to come out and support that event. It's, it's great to see everyone out mingling and having a good time when the weather is nice. So I want to say thank you about that. And just to, I'll put a continued plug in for all of the summer events that are still going on. Concerts at the park, we have a lifeguarded lake here in Samamish, which is a fantastic thing to have for those that have younger kids. And we have a lot of great parks and events still happening. So I would encourage everyone to get outside and participate with us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then councilmember Trean, I know you have a, the salmon thing.
Yes. So the Kokoni ILA management group met on Friday and proposed their budget. And it's a draft budget, but, so currently, Samamish's portion of it would have been in 2023 about $47,600. And then going forward, due to the low return on the number of fish that came back, they're going to save another generation of genetic gametes and eggs and, and take care of those. And so that's, so the three options that they presented, one, the first option was a budget or a deficit due to this additional expense. Option two was kind of, we'll come back and ask you for more money at, at the end of the year. And then the third option, which is, I just did quick math here, is $16,600 of additional expense to the city of Samamish, which is our portion of it. I, I think, I mean, I'm new to this particular, the budget committee, so this is my first time. So I do apologize for that. I, I was sitting in that meeting and I realized, oh yeah, Chrissy Malchow had the same problem and came to the council and asked us for some extra money. And so hopefully next year, we won't have that, the same challenge. But, so I'm looking for direction from the council if it's all right to approve an additional, let's call it $17,000 on a budget for the Kokoni management.
And this is for one year, 2024?
Yeah.
Cool. And then you said you talked to staff, and they said, we have that money somewhere.
Scott, do you want to speak to whether there's really $17,000 of extra money in the general fund?
Well, councilmember, I think how, how I would term it is, I think we can accommodate that within the approved budget that council approved. We will find a way to cover that for sure.
Councilmember Howe?
Kent, if I could just ask a question around the budget. And it has to do with the fact that I think that these budget requests do come in annually from the Kokoni Work Group to increase and to increase and to increase. Is there a way, are you on the finance committee then for them?
Yes.
My, my ask would be, can we get a forecast that we can believe in for a, like, a, that, you know, going forward? Because they, I, I'm going off memory, but I do believe that they ask periodically for more funds. And what, and we do have to figure out how that work, how that all works and, and what the return on the investment is.
So my ask of the committee was to air, they, they've been erring on the side of caution or, you know, they've been underestimating. And I don't know why they do that, but that's what they've been doing. And so I just said, well, why don't you make this, it's about $5,000 to do this service if we've got to save another generation of, of DNA. And that's about five grand. So that's the ask that they keep asking for, that's extra. And it's like, well, why don't you just put that in the budget going forward for now? And then instead of asking us for money, just do a carryforward. So that was my ask. Again, my first time on the meeting, and I just thought, wow, the way you guys are budgeting, it seems like you're, you're selling yourself a little short, but. I agree, I agree with you. I, I pushed it. We'll see what they do.
Councilmember Napuray?
Yeah, along the similar lines, my question was, are other cities also contributing more? Or have they been asked to contribute more? And then going forward, if we know that this is a pattern, I mean, to councilmember Howe's point, they should be better at forecasting. And then should we be also sort of assuming that we have to set some money aside? And I mean, I, I don't think that's my preferred way, but this does come as a surprise, you know, asking for, for addition funds. So question was two-part. One, are other cities also going for any particular option? And are all cities in? And then, yeah, how can we work better with them and encourage them to forecast better? Thanks.
So all, all this, all the cities will be paying more. Bellevue was not represented in the meeting, but when you look at their portion of it, it's, to their budget, it's nothing. It's, it's, it's so small that, that, you know, they're, they're just going to do it. Issaquah, the amount was small enough for Issaquah's representative to have the approval from their mayor to just say yes. And knowing what the fisheries, what, what Issaquah stands for in Salmon Days and the fishery and their investment into the saving of the Kokoni in the lake, for Issaquah, that was an automatic yes. And then unincorporated, or King County was also an easy yes for the King County. Because again, this, they're less than us, and their budget is huge, right? So the percentage of adjustment for them is a nothing as well. Redmond was a, Redmond was a yes as well. So at this point, most of the cities are pushing towards three. But because of our position as the largest contributor, I literally said, sorry, we're going to have to hold this up. And because Bellevue didn't show up to vote, we couldn't carry a majority, couldn't pass it. And so, yay.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
A lot of fun. It was actually a lot of fun. You guys would have, any one of you would have enjoyed being on this.
And why is it that we contribute the most?
We have the most property and population on the lake.
Okay.
And if you think about it, I, I, at first I was like, how can that be? What about Bellevue, right? That's huge. But then if you look how far Redmond comes around or Marymore Park, well, that's King County. And then you got the state park that wraps around. And then, so all of a sudden, I'm like, oh yeah, we actually do have a larger population and more property on, on the waterfront.
So, oh, go ahead.
So I'm just looking at the cost share options. So for 2023, Samamish would be paying $47,607, correct?
Yeah, and that's already budgeted, yeah.
That's already budgeted. And, you know, $16,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but as a percentage, it is.
Yes.
So, you know, to what everybody's saying, they need to do a better job with forecasting.
I agree.
Yeah, so I am good with option three. I know you also said there is an, another option is to bring it back next week that staff could present. So I don't know, council, what you're thinking if, yeah, does anyone have any thoughts? I'm moving forward with option three. You're delaying by one week. Option three?
We're good.
All right, we're good to go.
Appreciate it, council.
All right, does anyone else have a report? Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I am attending the Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow. Let me just pull up. There are two main topics. One is discussion on salary setting processes for cities. Some cities have salary commissions. And we'll be hearing from other cities how that's working for them or not working. And then we'll be looking at a charter, the current charter for the Affordable Housing Committee, and reviewing whether or not there needs to be any changes on that. And then there will be a discussion on the regional emergency management coordination in King County.
Councilmember Howe?
There are three meetings this week. Eastside Fire and Rescue is meeting with the board. And just to, as a note, I did send the meeting notes agenda out and that it looks like we are probably picking up, in fact, we are picking up Mercer Island. So that will be added to the consortium of cities. I'll be asking some questions around that, about staffing, and just to make sure that, that we're really going to be able to do, deliver the service level that Mercer Island would be expecting. There's an ETP or an Eastside Transportation meeting that I'll be doing with Kent on Friday. And there's also a King County flood meeting. So just letting you guys know what's on the docket.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we do have another executive session. So we have two, is it two items? Potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. Council may take action, and we are starting with, how long? What it says?
We think 30 minutes should suffice for both exec sessions. And so that would have us returning at 9:31.
Cool. All right, 9:31. Thank you. All right, council is extending executive session by 14 minutes to 9:45. Council is extending executive session by five minutes. We'll be back at 9:50. All right, we are back. Next, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hi, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.